And it is time to call the committee of the whole meeting for today in order. We are in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, Nebraska Vice Statute 84-1407. A current copy of the act is available in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Augustine Schulte.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Hemmer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Creshaw.
Here.
Lor.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schelling.
Here.
Council President Barr, the roll has been called.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one item on our agenda for this evening, and that is an informational presentation by the Columbus Golf Association concerning their concerns with Quail or Vanburg Golf Course. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President Barr. I've asked Council President Barr if I could have a moment just to try to clear the air a little bit, I think, on some of the possibly misconceptions that are out there in the public. There is no agenda or timeline that is set out on the closing of Vanburg Golf Course. About eighteen months ago, after the devastating flood damaged Quail Run, I did lay out a plan for the rebuild of Quail Run, and it included a recommendation for the eventual closing of Vanburg. This plan was based entirely on the cost the city of rebuilding Vanburg or rebuilding Quail Run, even with the FEMA assistance, and the continuing expenses the city incurs while operating twenty-seven holes of municipal golf. I have stated more than once, the city's position is to get Quail Run hole again. This is our premier objective. Once that has happened and play resumes and a sense of normalcy returns, we can look at the golf options that are available. What you are presenting today could be one of those options. As mayor, I have an obligation to be a good steward of our tax dollars. This includes overseeing the money spent on infrastructure, wastewater treatment, police, fire, and yes, all the amenities that our community enjoys. Golf is one of those amenities. We all have different interests. What is important to one is not always important to someone else. When allocating tax dollars, we are always walking a fine line between what is needed and what is nice. You can rest assured that no decision on the future of Vanburg has been made. When the time is appropriate, I will ask the council to review the costs and expenses related to maintaining twenty-seven holes of municipal golf, possibly by a study by an independent party, looking at the options available for twenty-seven holes in Columbus. There will be ample discussion and plenty of public input. It should be pointed out, the mayor cannot make this decision. All the mayor can do is lay out an idea and get the council engaged in the process. Thank you.
All right. We do have another meeting at seven o'clock, so I would like to see this wrapped up about five minutes till seven if we could. That gives the members a break if they need to use their facilities. Who would like to speak for the Columbus Golf Association?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Bill Padraza, 3175 Prairie Lane. The reason we are here, a little over a year ago, there was an item on the committee of the whole agenda related to golf, at which time we had some concerns and included the operation of the golf course and Quail Run. At that meeting, a number of us presented opinions regarding those issues. Since then, we have organized the Columbus Golf Association. We are here this evening to present a case for keeping Vanburg Course open. Our interpretation at that time was that it would close as soon as Quail opened, and the mayor has clarified his position on that. The clubhouse is in need of work, according to fire code. We want to create a youth-oriented facility. We do not want to spend time and money on those two activities if Quail Run or Vanburg is to close within a year. Our presentation this evening will include input from a number of people representing various factions. I would ask that you do not ask questions so that we can keep moving to keep within that timeframe. Okay?
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you for clarifying. I'm Rick Carlin, 2775 North Park Lane in Columbus. In sixty-nine, our grandfather, M. H. Vanburg, negotiated agreement with the leaders of the city of Columbus. At that time, he purchased, then deeded to the city, the former Wayside Country Club. City leaders voluntarily agreed to the conditions of this gift, which included the commitment that the city would use said real estate for golf course purposes, or park purposes, or either or both of such purposes. City leaders also agreed that if the city fails or ceases to use the real estate for the purposes herein provided, then the title and right to possession of the real estate herein deeded shall revert to Mr. and Mrs. Vanburg or their heirs. The family has asked Rick Carlin, one of the approximately hundred living direct descendants of M. H. and Viola Vanburg, to express to the mayor and the city council our strongly held position that the city honor its commitment and reaffirm that it will maintain the land, preferably as a golf course. Our highest priority is that we remember, honor, and work hard to maintain our ancestors' clear wishes, intent, and generosity. And then I have just a quick statement here on behalf of myself. This is not the family statement now. I'd like to make a brief statement, not only as an heir, but as a resident of the community. I was raised here, chose to raise my family here. As I age, I question, what will my legacy be, or what will I leave behind? I think about Grandpa and Grandma Van's generosity, foresight, giving a golf course to a whole community and its residents, knowing it wasn't about what he would receive in return, but the pleasure of giving back to the community he loved, and ensuring many families could enjoy the benefits of having such a facility for many years to come. My Aunt Virginia Smith, who worked on several projects for the community, most residents will never know all of her involvement, but one of my favorites was her work with the Pawnee Park Foundation that raised money to bring golf in Columbus. Maybe my legacy is to remind the residents and leaders of this community to hold dear the gifts received. I urge you to embrace this diversity in golfers in our community. I don't feel Vanburg is competing with Quail. I believe it enhances while and provides an opportunity for all residents and skill levels. Thank you all for your time on this topic, as well as your commitment to making Columbus a beautiful place to live, raise families, or retire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlin.
My name is Tom Framuth, 1964, West Camino Real, Columbus. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council members. Thanks for your time. The focus of my presentation this evening is going to be the Columbus Golf Association's vision to create the Vanburg Family Golf Learning Center. Just as a-
A little closer to the mic, we can't hear you.
Okay. It's not picking you. Okay. Just as a little backup here, in case somebody didn't hear me, the focus of my presentation tonight is the Columbus Golf Association vision to create the Vanburg Family Golf Learning Center. Just as a little backdrop, I'm an attorney, helped the Columbus Golf Association form earlier this year. Been golfing and hacking around your golf courses here for about the last five years. I live real close to Quail, Monday through Thursday during golf season, early April to the end of August. When I get done working five, six, and I want to go walk real quick nine holes, you can't golf at Quail prior to the flood because of the leagues. So I would always go to Vanburg. So I really enjoy Vanburg, got to know the staff, and it's one of the reasons why I'm involved in this process. So, just as a little bit of background, we have a signature petition to support our effort that acquired fourteen hundred signatures almost in just twenty days of work. Most of those folks are Columbus residents, most of those folks are adults, there are some children on the petition, the signature petition. There are some folks from out of town, but the overwhelming majority are adults and Columbus residents. But we thought it would be important to include kids if they wanted to sign, and also include folks from out of town. We had somebody from Bennington who wrote on the petition that we just got to keep Vanburg rolling. So we've submitted those electronically to the city clerk. And a little more backdrop, in nineteen ninety-one, the city passed by a vote of four thousand four hundred and thirteen to five twenty-five, the Vanburg Golf Course Preservation Measure. That measure requires a vote of the electorate to close Vanburg. Moving on, a lot of you folks, a lot of the council members and the mayor know some of this, but just for the benefit of the folks watching on thirteen oh five who haven't heard some of this, I'll get into the focus of my presentation. As you know, we went to the Parks Board with our vision to create the Learning Center at Vanburg. That received support from eight of the nine Parks Board members. Our model that we presented is the Jim Agar Learning Center in Lincoln. It's a nine-hole venue, opened in the nineteen sixties. In two thousand fourteen, the PGA worked with Agar to establish the Agar Learning Center that focused on helping youths and beginners get going. It's grown golf in Lincoln. All five city courses have seen an improvement in their play, and it's also helped their country clubs in Lincoln. And a big priority for us to work with the Elks. We want to grow golf in Columbus and make this town in terms of golf even better, but also stimulate the economy is a big focus. Another point on the Agar Learning Center is that, for the first time possibly ever, they're making money this year. Established in twenty fourteen, by twenty eighteen, they were named in Nebraska PGA Facility of the Year. I gave all you folks the four-page Agar PGA Facility of the Year application. I encourage you to look at that. They reached out to nonprofits and the businesses to really create a great thing, and that's something that we think we can focus on here. Moving on, I also gave you a one-page mission and vision statement prepared by Brent McGrew. Brent's in the audience. Brent's a very well-liked teacher by folks of all ages. He has created this vision and mission statement that's similar to the Jim Agar model in Lincoln. One of the big things that we'll focus on is having graduated tee boxes out at the golf course to help kids and beginners at different levels. If they can't hit it as far, they'll have a tee box that will accommodate their game so they don't get discouraged right out of the gate. Again, the focus will be youths and beginners to grow golfs. The course would still be available to all the other folks who like to use it. You know, a lot of seniors really like to use that course rather than going out to Quail. We also have a vision to create a magnet for youth tournaments. We've identified some funding sources outside the hundred-mile radius to try to get youths in to do tournaments at Vanburg. And you'll hear later from our business representative Chuck Jensen at Stack and Steak. When we have tournaments that come into town, he feels it on his bottom line significantly. We also really want to work, as I said, in cooperation with the Elks. And we're hoping that by doing youth and beginner programs there, we can grow golf and help the Elks. So, appreciate your time to share this vision with you. And right now, I'd like to introduce Stacy Smith, the two thousand nineteen Columbus High Educator of the Year.
I'm a little shorter. Good evening. Stacy Smith, number eleven Sandy Point Drive. I am here, I'm a strength, I've been in Columbus High School for thirty years. I'm the strength and conditioning coach. I coach lifetime activities and wellness. Part of my lifetime activities class, the goal of that class is to introduce kids to everything the community of Columbus has to offer. I'd like them to stay healthy for a lifetime. I'd like to teach them how to relieve stress. With that being said, one of the things we do is we take them to Pawnee Park, we teach them how to play tennis, disc golf, sand volleyball. We work with the local bowling alleys, and we take them in, teach them how to bowl, teach them how to score good bowling. We have worked with the Y, we've taken them into the Y and gotten them into classes, Vizumbo with Kathy Jackson, Body Pump with Marsha Grant. We've done some spinning with Jen Brownlaw. That being said, we have always wanted to work with the golf course, but until they've decided to use a youth model, because we are free and reduced school and we're a public education, everything we do is free. So with this model, we can work with the Vanburg, which we would love to do, to introduce foot golf and golf to these kids. I think anytime you have the opportunity to teach kids at a young age, they're less intimidated and they intend to stay with it much longer. I think, you know, we've seen, our data tells us, we run about seventy-five to a hundred kids through this class a year. Our data shows about twenty to thirty percent of these kids stay with activities on a regular basis. I go down to Pawnee Park, I see them playing disc golf, they're hollering at me, I see them playing tennis, these types of things. These kids, these kids are tended to stick with it. That being said, if that's the case, you're looking to fifteen to twenty new memberships a year, potentially. And I think if we can introduce it to these kids at a young age, our chances are much greater. On a personal note, my husband Dan and I have lived in Columbus for thirty years. We've enjoyed Vanburg, we live out at Wagner's Lake, we've enjoyed Vanburg, we run over there, we play a quick round of golf, we head on home to do our yard work and whatever else. We've introduced golf to several kids, including our daughter. Our hope is that golf can stay in this community and that we have the opportunity to introduce this to young kids and keep building and growing our community. I believe the model this group is proposing is the perfect model to promote and make Vanburg not only one of the best golf courses in the state, in this community, but in the state. I thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
My name is Tanya Nidbalski, 727 Second Street, Columbus, Nebraska. I've just completed my twenty-sixth year as the head girls' golf coach at Skoda Central Catholic. We practice and play at both Quail Run and Vanburg, and because of the many men's and women's leagues, we flip-flop between the course, courses, excuse me. We also have to share the course with Lakeview High School girls' golf team. It's often hard to find course time for the girls, the opportunity to get out and play. Our practices are held after school, starting at four fifteen, and that's prime league time. Vanburg is an ideal course for the beginning golfer. Many of my high school girls learned the game from their parents who took them to Vanburg to play, and they have since perfected their game utilizing Vanburg. It's very intimidating for a beginning golfer to try to find playing time on one public course, and then also have to handle the seasoned golfers wanting to play through or standing around waiting for them to hurry up and hit the ball. Golf is a lifetime sport. The young ladies I coach today, they're the future of our community. Providing recreational activities for them to learn the game in an atmosphere conducive to their school skill level is very important. My own grandsons are picking up the game of golf, and Vanburg is the perfect course for them to learn on. I hope we can continue to provide opportunities for all ages of golfers by allowing Vanburg to remain open. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Chuck Jensen. I live at thirty-two oh four Thirty-second Street here in Columbus, and my wife Deb and I have owned Stack and Steak Restaurant for over thirty-four years. And I just want to emphasize how much these kind of events bring business to town. When golf, baseball, and soccer school events are going on in town, all the businesses in town receive a revenue boost, not only the local businesses, but that in turn helps the city out. For example, when the high school tournament was held at the Elks, you know, a week and a half ago or whatever, our sales increased by over twenty-five percent for those three days, and it does every time there's an event like a soccer tournament or baseball's really big. So, also, the high school tournament they had up at the Elks, there's fifteen out-of-town teams, or fifteen teams, or thirteen were from out of town. Those thirteen teams averaged five motel rooms a night for two nights. That's a hundred and thirty rooms for those two days, just in hotel rooms. That's revenue brought into the town. Now, to me, we can't afford not to push this stuff. So, that's money spent in the city of Columbus. Golf courses are a quality of life item that not only benefits the residents, but also brings in out-of-town visitors and is a great incentive for families and businesses to set up shop and become part of our community. So when Quail Run reopens, Vanburg Golf Course will be needed to accommodate local league, recreational, and beginner golfers, while Quail Run will be holding these events on its championship course. I also believe that with a little work, we will be able to bring in youth events at Vanburg Golf Course outside of the hundred-mile radius, which is what we're working on right now, that will, they'll be spending the night in town if they're coming from that far. So I cannot emphasize enough how much business revenue is brought in by having all these events from sports, and it's an amenity. It's like the library or the aquatic center or the water park. We need to push these things, and they bring revenue into the city that doesn't come from a lot of other places. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Moore, and I reside at thirty-one sixty-nine Forty-Fifth Avenue here in Columbus. I am a professional civil engineer out of Baylen Manufacturing. I have been at Baylen now for over thirty-seven and a half years. To give you guys some knowledge of how I think, because I do structural steel design for the Baylen Building Divisions, as a designer of buildings, I must always consider the standards of a steel design. The most important item that I look at is the safety of the people that will be present in the buildings. As such, the codes I follow, oh, I lost my place, consider the standards of design. I must always look at the safety of the people that will be present in the buildings I design. So as such, the codes I follow, the rules are always black or white. There are no grays, there are no off-whites. Everything I do and I think is in black and white. If I make a mistake in my design, that mistake could be the life of somebody. That being the practice that I do in my work, that also flows over into my socialist career. Many of the things I do, I think, are in black or white. They're either right or they're wrong. The closing of a Vanburg Golf Course is wrong. I taught my two girls how to play golf at the Vanburg Course. Why? The course was much easier than the course at Quail or at Elks, or at some of the other places I could take them. I wanted them to learn the game and not be frustrated. I wanted them to learn to be confident in how they play. When a course is long and it takes a lot of shots to reach a hole, it can be very discouraging. To have a group of men pressing you and your daughters to move faster, it can become very frustrating for them. I wanted my girls to enjoy the game while learning it. Vanburg accomplished that. As mentioned from several of the people here, you can see that is a common theme that goes on with the Vanburg Courts. Older individuals, men and women, I'll be up there someday here, also prefer to play at Vanburg. For many of them, Quail Run or the Elks, it's just too long and too difficult. I was asked here to speak to be a representative of local businesses and the local industries. I cannot necessarily speak for all of them, but I can for Baylen Manufacturing. As I mentioned earlier, I've been at Baylen for over thirty-seven years. This August, I completed my thirty-seventh season as the secretary of the Baylen Golf League. We play on Tuesday nights, the same night as the women golf league plays on. Last two years have been challenging due to the flooding, but thankfully, we have had the Vanburg Course to play on. I do know that if the city did not have a Vanburg Course, that the members of the Baylen Golf League, which number's probably about forty, would not have been able to play this year. We at Baylen are very appreciative of the golf pros at Quail Run and for the city for having the course such as Vanburg. I know that employees at other industries in the Columbus area feel the same way. Financial consultants, many members of the community, and possibly some of the council members, look at two colors. You look at black and red. Me, I look at two colors, black or white, right or wrong. The closing of a Vanburg Golf Course is wrong. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Terry Hoesley. I live at four oh eight South Fifth Street here in Columbus. I'm a Columbus native and a graduate of Columbus High School. I married my husband Dan, who was a teacher and a football coach. We lived in many towns in Nebraska, and when his retirement came along, we decided to move back here. Our goal is to try to find a small acreage to buy, or a house by a lake, or a house by a golf course. We searched and searched, and we kept coming back to this house right across from Quail Run, and we eventually purchased that house. And that served two purposes for us, not only to be close to that golf course, but it also offered a view of an acreage my husband didn't have to mow, so he was very glad about that. I'm representing the Quail and Vanburg Senior Ladies Leagues, which support keeping Vanburg open. Here are some of the reasons why. For we seniors, Vanburg is an easier course to walk. It allows our members to get exercise, visit with friends, and to enjoy a round of golf. This league alternates courses with Quail. Sometimes, due to outings or tournaments at Quail, we are still able to golf because Vanburg is there for us. Due to the course repair at Quail, all three ladies leagues, the seniors, the Tuesday Night Ladies League, and the Girls Night Out League, have had to go with the flow. For instance, Tuesday Nights League was always at Quail, but now alternates with Vanburg. The Girls Night Out League was always Thursday night at Vanburg, but now is on Mondays at Quail. If there's another activity scheduled Monday at Quail, the Girls Night Out League is diverted to Vanburg. And as I mentioned, the senior league alternates both courses and will adjust to Vanburg if Quail has something else going on. So without Vanburg as a go-to place for us, there would be several cancellations going on within our leagues, and golf is the highlight for all that participate, women and men. Our women's leagues are dedicated to keeping Vanburg open, so much that in two thousand nineteen, we sponsored a tournament to raise money to update the Vanburg bathrooms. With the money earned and many volunteers, this was accomplished. We are committed to volunteer where needed for updates to the clubhouse or the course. Finally, Vanburg Golf Course was a gift to the city for all to enjoy. It is a part of a mecca in southwest Columbus, which encompasses Pawnee Park and all within. And most of you know this, this includes the Higgins Memorial, Memorial Stadium, Pawnee Plunge, baseball fields, tennis courts, horseshoe pits, walking paths, a fishing pond, sand volleyball, a skate park, picnic areas, playground equipment, and frisbee golf. On the west side of this mecca is beautiful Vanburg Golf Course, which also includes soccer golf. Where in the state of Nebraska can you find a place that has all of these amenities in one place? So please keep this in mind when you start thinking that you want to close Vanburg. The money spent on this course means a place where we senior golfers, on down to the youth golfers, can go. It's a course that we take great pride in. Last but not least, Dan and I decided to buy a resort- Last but not least, Dan and I decided to buy a resort home. We chose Stires Lake. It's three miles from our house. It borders Vanburg Golf Course, which is another acreage she doesn't have to mow. And we also have our lake home. So with that, God bless America, God bless Columbus, and let's make Vanburg great again.
Okay, and we're running short of time, I'm gonna just throw a couple of things out. When, when Quail Run was built, a consultant said that you didn't need twenty-seven holes of golf. I want you to just think about this. In nineteen ninety-one, our population was nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty-six. Today, it's twenty-three hundred and seven, twenty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-two. We have thirty-nine hundred and six people more living here. That does not include the people in the subdivisions on the outside of city limits. Talking about money, and what it costs to keep it, and, and so on. You all know that you have a lot of amenities, we have a lot of amenities in our community. And I could go through the numbers, and I don't want to take all the time, because I know there'll be rebuttals. But I do want to just point this out, that the last number that I had, which is a couple of years old, but doesn't change much, for the operation of Vanburg, was about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. If you look at the valuation of the community and take a house of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, it amounts to eight dollars and eighty cents a year for tax increase. We have a lot of amenities, you know that, that none of them pay for themselves. None of them. You can take the Grand Generation Center, you can take the library, you can take the swimming pool, none of them pay for themselves. They're there because they're amenities, they're quality of life, and that's what we're really trying to maintain in our community. Again, what we're asking for is a commitment from you, some continuation of Vanburg until Quail is completely renovated and we can do an analysis. Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anybody that would like to speak against this proposal?
My name is John Curry, and I live at thirty-six forty-five Brookfield Drive in Columbus. Tonight, we've heard many passionate pleas to keep Muni Golf status quo as it is. What's missing from all these arguments is the fact that Columbus loses conservatively four hundred thousand dollars per year providing municipal golf for the people who play. They're either undercharged, or it's just mismanagement. There is no community in Nebraska that comes anywhere close, nor if Platte gets a little close, one out of seventeen. Communities have already done the research. This is a decided issue. Columbus is out in left field on its golf program, completely out in left field. We have twenty-seven holes of golf and twenty-two some, twenty-three some thousand people. The ratio of people to holes of golf is just way out of whack with the rest of the state that, cities that do provide golf, municipal golf. Ten out of peer group cities in the state, peers to Columbus, do not own, operate a municipal golf course. Why is that? Of the seven that do, the seven of the seventeen that do, you have Omaha, which has four thousand people per hole of golf more, Lincoln, over, close to thirty-five hundred, Grand Island is eighteen hundred, I can't remember, I could look the number up for you, you have it?
I know the numbers.
It's out of whack. They're not losing money, with the exception of North Platte. Other communities in Nebraska are not losing anywhere near this much money. I have no problem with Vanburg, but the rates are too low. The people who live next to it, they like having a beautiful golf course to drive by. That's great, but that's not in the interest of taxpayers. Eighteen holes at Quail Run is more than enough municipal golf for this community. If people really want to have twenty-seven holes of golf, charge them. Charge them so that it doesn't cost taxpayers so much money. It's not complicated, we have examples throughout the state, and it shouldn't go on as it has. When the time comes for Quail Run to be opened back up, it is in the best interest of the city to either jack the rates up, so it doesn't cost taxpayers so much money, or figure out something else to do with Vanburg. Give it back to the heirs, that'd be an advantage, huge gain to taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. And anyone else to speak against this proposal?
President, is our, are we making a recommendation, or are we, are we looking at what the park board recommended, or what, what do we need to do here to move this?
This, this is just an informational meeting.
Nothing needs to be done at this time?
Nothing, nothing at this time. Somewhere down the line, when we start looking at all the different proposals, and this will be one of them that we will certainly look at, because it's a, to my way of thinking, at this point in time, and everything I've been furnished, it looks like a good idea. So at that point in time, we'll, the council will have to make a decision.
I, I believe the, the Golf Association has made a financial commitment to the, to the Vanburg Course going forward, and I, and I think maybe we need to at least address some of that. I don't know if this is the right time to do that, or if we can bring it back at another time.
I would suspect we probably should bring it back at another time, because I've seen nothing of financial input. I've got no information about any of that.
Well, the, the clubhouse needs some upgrading, and I don't think we have it in our budget to do that.
Understood.
And, and they're willing to, to be participants in that.
If, that being said, I'm not sure, and we would need to speak with the city attorney, we don't want to open up a can of worms and find ourselves liable for someone that got hurt there.
I understand that, I understand. But I mean, if they're even fundraising to pay for the cost to have somebody come in there and do it, I, I, I...
I love the idea, so...
But, Charlie?
Dennis?
Uh, last time, didn't we put this before the people to vote on? I'm just wondering if, when the time comes, we shouldn't let the people vote on it again in the city?
The way that ballot question was written, yes, that's what it said.
Yeah.
You are correct. Mr. Schelling?
Well, kind of revering back to what Rich said, and that is, Golf Association has, has done a, a lot of work putting together a program, you know, for Quail. And one of the big things is, is the clubhouse. Now, that clubhouse hasn't had anything done to it, I think, since it was the, it used to be the country club. We need to have some doors changed, we don't, we need fire doors, which are not fire doors. We don't have the wall thickness that we need to have out there. These are things that, that the Golf Association has willingly to, or is willing to put together a program to repair some of this stuff, but the way I look at it, is that we don't have it in our budget this year to do it in. But if they go in and, and repair some of this stuff, it would be nice, maybe, that we, as the council, would put in the budget to reimburse some of this funds back to the Golf Association. Because they're putting their, their monies into this thing to make it so that it is a proper building, right now. The fire marshal came in and says, hey, if you don't repair it, I'm gonna shut it down. I mean, it's gonna be closed, period.
Really?
What they told us.
I don't think that's correct.
They are getting pretty far off course here, and we've got... Charlie, I, I agree with you that that is not the, that's not the agenda item tonight. And we, the city has never stood in the way of the CGA, or, or any organization, like was previously stated of making improvements out there. So I don't think that that's an issue, that if they want to make improvements to it. But yes, that's not exactly what we're talking about tonight.
Well, it's part, it's part of the, it's part of our, of our Golf Association's in situation, that in order for, for Vanburg to stay viable, we need to have a clubhouse that is, is not...
Right, that discussion came up, I'll just remind everybody, back, gosh, in March, April, that discussion came up because the city had looked at expanding the liquor license at Vanburg. Because Quail was down, we thought it was something we could do to kind of expand the utilization, maybe, and even the revenues at Vanburg, with little to no overhead cost. But then, once we got the application in, the fire marshal came in and said, in order to do that, you need to do these few things. So that's where it's at now, and we haven't proceeded with that. And on that council meeting, the CGA, Tom actually got on the call, because we were having conference meetings at that time, and he said that the CGA, what if the CGA does it? And we said, sure, we'll leave it open, so they can determine if they want to do it or not.
Very good. I mean, Mr. Lawrence?
Could somebody tell me whether the Learning Center part of Ager is a profit center?
Yes, Tom?
Yeah, the course opened in the nineteen sixties, my understanding is never made...
Oh, excuse me.
It's making money this year. They focused on the Learning Center with the help of the PGA in 2014, became Facility of the Year in 2018. This year, they're actually making money. One of, there's five city courses there, they're actually making money, and they believe they've improved the bottom line at the other city courses. And as I mentioned earlier, they actually helped grow golf for the country clubs in the Lincoln area.
Do they differentiate between what the golf play brings in, and what the learning part of it, the schooling part of it brings in?
Haven't had a chance to get those details, but we sure plan to get those details.
I'd like to see them and get them.
Okay, will do.
Thank you, Tom. That being said...
President, Mr. President, can I ask Mr. Velores, can I, can I make a motion?
Can you make a recommendation?
Sure. Make a recommendation that the property presently owned by the City of Columbus, known as Vanburg Golf Course, is intended to remain in use as a golf course by the City of Columbus, Nebraska, at least until after the city and the Columbus Golf Association has completed a joint evaluation of public golf in the City of Columbus, after Quail Run Golf Course is operational as an eighteen-hole venue, and after Vanburg Family Golf Learning Center is established for a period of time sufficient to measure its value to the community.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second to recommend to the council, and we, everything Mr. Jablonsky said.
I've got copies to stay with you.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please vote aye, and those opposed nay.
Excuse me, excuse me, I, uh, remain open for what period of time?
We have none.
Was there no period of time mentioned?
Period of time is when Quail Run gets back operational, and so who knows that? I mean...
All right, in, in the printed matter, we're talking about five to ten years.
That's the recommendation from the park board.
What is our recommendation? What was your motion?
I just read it.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand it, or didn't hear it.
I said, at least until after the City of Columbus Golf has completed a joint evaluation of the public golf in the City of Columbus, after Quail Run Golf Course is operational as an eighteen-hole venue, and after Vanburg Family Golf Learning Center is established for a period of time sufficient to measure its values to the community.
So there is no time period mentioned, five to ten years?
Not in this motion, no, there is not.
Fine. Just make sure that that, in, in the motion on the...
The recommendation from the park board had five to ten years.
Yes.
My motion does not.
That, that's what I wanted to make sure. Because if it was a motion of five to ten years, I would, I am not in favor of it. But the motion as it reads, after, until Vanburg, or until Quail Run is reestablished, I can live with it.
All right, all those in favor, please vote aye, those opposed nay. The recommendation is approved. Ladies and gentlemen, we are at seven oh one, we're just over the limit. Thank you so much for coming, appreciate all your time and efforts. We stand adjourned.
Thank you, Bill.